I know we have lots of people here and I'm presuming several people would like to speak. I just want to say that the school committee has obviously voted on a budget that we felt we could live with, not necessarily one that is ideal or that we would ideally want. And at this point, we have submitted it to the mayor. The mayor has submitted his budgets to the city council. We have no ability to impact that in any way. I would strongly urge people who have comments around the budget that has been submitted to the city council to please attend the hearing, budget hearings, at the city council. That would probably be the best focus for your voices at this point because we can't change what we've already submitted and we have no impact on what was submitted to the city council. So we're certainly happy to hear your thoughts, but just for people to know that at this point, that's where that stands. In addition, Kristin wanted me to mention, she couldn't be here tonight, that in July, we will be going over all the line items. So the final fallout of what it will look like, I mean, we know at this point probably what we're working with for money, but we can move things from line item to line item. So we will be looking at that once we officially know the amount of money that we're working at. So right now, things are still a little bit in flux and we will certainly be paying attention to the budget and working continuously to do the best job we can to support our students and our staff. So I just wanted to say that ahead of time.
Can we just clarify the date of the, because I don't know that we could, there's public, if one of the city councillors can confirm, is there a public comment at both the school presentation and the night that you vote on the budget? Or is it just one time that you can speak? Sue?
The finance chair, it's actually up to him, it's discretionary at a subcommittee level, but the finance chair has said that he would certainly allow people to comment during the two hearings that we have this week's budget. And then at the council meeting on Monday night when we council the budget, is the public forum, so that's another call to make.
Thank you.
And so the first...
Yep.
Sure. So basically, it's up to the chair of the finance subcommittee of the city council to allow public comment. And we're hearing that they are going to allow public comment on both the hearing dates and then, of course, on the regularly scheduled meeting, which is the date that they will be voting on the budget. So the first meeting is June 21st, which is Wednesday. That's our public hearing for the school to present their budget.
What time?
And that's at...
It's 6:30.
6:30. Okay? So that would be an important place for people to show support. Sue?
Yeah, there are, yeah. I believe the first one is tomorrow morning at 7:15, and that's when the mayor will give his overall presentation on the entire budget.
Okay.
I'd be interested in that as well.
So I'm just going to repeat that for the record, since I have the mic and you don't, is that there is a budget hearing tomorrow, the first one, at 7:15, where the mayor is going to present the budget that, for the entire city, all of, all departments, which will also include the school department. So that would also be a time for people, if they feel the need to comment, would be tomorrow night at 7:15 and Wednesday night at 6:30. And then the regularly city council meeting is on Monday night, correct? But, you know, so at this point, I'm going to open it up for public forum. Would anybody like to address the committee? Please come up, state your name. Is there...
There's a list, I'll look up.
There's a list?
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
Please state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to two minutes or less. We have Holly Koski, and I apologize if I butcher anybody's name, but Holly, if you can come on up.
Hi, my name is Holly Koski. I was born and raised in Leominster. I just recently moved to New Hampshire. My husband is a junior custodian, and my question is, the junior custodian contract is dated July 5th, 2015, through July 30th, June 30th, I'm sorry, 2018. And I'm wondering, how can you not honor their contract? Also, I'm wondering, on June 5th, I heard a request to see the custodian's contract from, I believe it was Kristin, and I'm wondering whether or not you guys have seen it? And if there's a possibility that you could negotiate it with them? And then my third and final question is, did the junior custodial positions get put out to bid? Was there an RFP out there on it? If so, when, where, who responded, and for what monetary amount?
Just so you know, we cannot respond to the public comment.
I read that in your directions. That's why I'm just reading them out.
Yep, no, that's fine, just so you know why we're not answering you.
Okay. Because I believe the only way you could do anything with the custodian contract is financially, if there wasn't enough money, you could get rid of their positions. So I'm just wondering how much the bids came back at? And whether you guys are really saving money?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Claire Frida.
Thank you, Claire Frida, 117 Debbie Drive in Leominster. I don't speak long enough.
It's really just so that it gets picked up on television.
Am I all right?
Thank you.
Compromise. I actually wanted to speak and congratulate Fallbrook on their 50th celebration. I was there on Saturday, but I got to tell you, I'm here because I have over a 40-year relationship with Fallbrook School. I registered my daughter for kindergarten in 1977, and the article that was in the newspaper regarding the 50th celebration really bothered me because to credit two individuals, and it's certainly not to minimize those two individuals, but David Haye and Stephen Memoni did a wonderful job when they were there, but you don't have 50 years of success by, with two people. There were a lot of principals in that school, a lot of different styles, a lot of different places and time, a lot of different budgets, a lot of different school committees, city councillors, and mayors. So they've all had their place. But, you know, Casey Migliosi and Dawn Franciosi did an incredible job. They were there for the 11 years my children were there. John Mendez, who everybody had respect for in the system, was also there. And to minimize all the others that were there in celebration of that school's history and that school's ability to be what it is today, and then to take away from the eight years Paula Deacon has been there, and she's brought that school to a Level 1 school and has the last eight years supported that school and allowed the teachers to be innovative and to be creative and to really create an environment for good learning. Marilyn Fratirelli was the leader over there, the first female for four years before she became the superintendent, and, you know, kind of led the charge for the first female. So it bothered me to see two singled out over a 50-year period. I know that school just as well as everybody else does, with my relationship as a parent, with the PTO, representing it six years in the school committee and for 24 years as a city councillor. So I think I have a little bit of knowledge of what happened in those, in those years. And I'm proud of the school, I'm proud of the people that went through it, and I'm proud of what it is today. So I just wanted to add that and say there's a lot of people responsible for that success.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
We have Tim up next.
Hi, Tim Brazili, 85 Watson Ave. I'm a lifelong resident alumna ster and a recent custodian in the past five years at Skyview Middle School. We were asked to bring a proposal to the table to try and save jobs, save money. We wrote it up eight days ago, it was submitted, and we have not been contacted back on any meetings or anything. So just to follow up on what Mrs. Koski asked, we did submit something, we thought we saved some money, we thought we could minimize the impact of the major layoffs, and we haven't had the opportunity to state our case. I was just curious on where that stands. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter?
My name is Peter D. Francesco. I'm from Worcester. I was an employee of the Leominster Public School System, as a special ed teacher up until last week. My main comments were actually going to be about the relationship that the school system has and the mayor. Half of that relationship isn't here right now, so hopefully my comments still make it to everybody who they're intended to be for. In my two years working in Leominster, I did grow up and go to school here, I've never really seen as broken relationship with the mayor and the schools. If you've ever been part of a long-term relationship, you need at least three things for it to work successfully. You have to be able to compromise, you have to trust each other, and you have to be accountable to each other. There's none of that right now in the Leominster public schools. I know it's been talked about over and over again, and words really don't matter that much anymore, it's time for action. When it comes to compromising, Mr. Mayor, when you give the school system the least amount of money that the state requires, and then you charge us $6 million and more, that's not fair. We need to be able to compromise with that. You can't have a relationship where one side is just taking and the other side, "No, sorry, sorry about that, can't do anything." It's not fair and it's not right, and that needs to change. You have to be able to trust each other. There's a lot of backdoor and, you know, the word transparency gets thrown around, but it's not true. What are the chargebacks? What are they? Does anybody know? I mean, I don't, and I'm a teacher, I don't know if administrators know, but how can we trust each other if we don't know what we're being charged for? And accountability, everybody here has made mistakes, and in a strong relationship, that's okay, because you're there for each other to pick each other up. But who's, who's taking accountability for it? You read anything in the newspaper and it's finger pointing, and it's everything else, and it's the students who get screwed in the end. It's like a bitter divorce where the kids, who do they choose? So that's all I have to say, and thank you, and see you later, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Peter.
Michael Stassen, 893 Main Street. I also actually had a comment mostly for the mayor. It seems to me that the school committee has been elected by the citizens of Leominster to do a job. You did your job, you voted on a budget. It seems clear to me that as chair of the committee, he should have a responsibility to present that budget to the city council. I think to do otherwise is unethical and it's just wrong. He had a chance here to argue against it and to vote against it, of course, he didn't come to those meetings. He has a second chance at the city council to say if he thinks maybe it's too much, but he's also cutting the city council out, so I just think that's wrong. Going forward, since I know you're done with the budget, let me just, I will say I do think outsourcing is not the right solution. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like, would anybody else like to address the committee?
Yep, they would.
I have more copies of what I just handed out in the back on the counter and up here on the table, if anyone would like to use one. My name is Dan Bayshant, and I'm the assistant principal of the Leominster Center for Technical Education. Tonight, I will defend the reason why we should have zero positions cut from CTEI. Not only is it an exceptional vocational school for the children of Leominster, but it is also a major financial resource for the city of Leominster and the Leominster School District as a whole. On the handout, you'll see a complete copy of the foundation budget, as seen on the Massachusetts Department of Education website, and on the backside, you'll see that same information transferred to the top of the diagram. And I want to focus on the vocational section. We have 673 students figured into the budget, and the total budget is $8,864,029. Over on the left-hand side, right here, you'll see the CTEI starting balance. So what I did is, I did this like a checkbook. You have a starting balance, you deduct, and you have a remaining balance, and you continue to carry it down. So the beginning balance of $8,864,000, I deducted 44 teachers, two administrators, one dean, one guidance counselor, I even threw in one maintenance worker, and .5 of a school resource officer. The numbers I got for that were taken right from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Office of School Finance. They track salaries by district, and if you look over to the right-hand side of the chart, you'll see where I took it right out of the website, and you'll notice from 2012 to 2016, of all the average salaries for the Leominster teachers, the highest one was in 2014, which was $68,901. I used that calculation, and I added to that $25,000 per person for other expenses, just because I know every time we talk salaries, everyone says, "Oh, well, there's other things that you don't know about." $25,000 should cover that. If you add those two together, you get $91,901. I got two tutors at $45,000 per year, eight paraprofessionals at $30,000 a year, and one secretary at $35,000 a year. The total under that line item is $5,018,100. Remaining balance, 3.845,000. From there, I continued, I subtract $314,000 for the CTEI operating budget, which is all supplies, materials, and expenses. I didn't have the actual numbers on electric, hot water, water, sewer, heating, et cetera, so I took a million out. I think that'll cover it. I also took the city payback, back charges for the so-called plowing, sanding, and whatever else is in there, which I've read several times to be $6.2 million. I divided that by the nine schools in the district, and the result is a fee of $688,888. After you're done deducting all these expenses, you're left with a remaining balance of $1,843,041. This does not include the hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings that CTE brings to the city taxpayers through the work of our outside construction building program and all the other shops and the work that they contribute to the city. We continue to explore adding new programs so our students are exposed, exposed to more career pathways with the added benefit of increased funding to the city and the district budgets. Clearly, everyone can see the benefits CTEI has on the education of the children in Leominster, yet as we speak, 15 of our teachers, 30% of our CTE workforce, have already received layoff letters. Parents of CTEI students are calling us and exploring pulling their children out of our school to attend another trade school in fear of their shop closing. And indeed, if these cuts are not corrected, five out of 12 shops will have to close down because there'll only be one teacher left to teach four grades, and it's just not possible to run those programs. This would also eliminate the outside program that saves the city hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. Teachers in these programs are already being recruited by our competition, and if we don't act swiftly to restore these cuts, we run the risk of losing our highly skilled staff. Please do the right thing here. Don't eliminate the supply chain. Don't cut off the hand that feeds the district. The effects of these cuts will be detrimental to the students of Leominster and the school department foundation budget as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's where we have the speakers that are signed up. Does anyone else would like to address the school committee? If so, microphone and your name and address, please, for the record. Once again, one last time, Larry?
For the record, my name is Larry Genakis, 148 Grand Street in Leominster. Just in regards to the outsourcing of the technology department, I just hope that people from this board look at those numbers carefully and look at that $150,000 contract. City Hall, as was mentioned earlier, has an outsourcing program that they're using with an outside vendor, and they've since hired a part-time employee, from what I understand, because of cost overruns. So you need to make sure that there's going to be no cost overruns. At this point, you can keep my job, I don't even care, but you need to make sure that the kids and the teachers have what they need for next year, and then it all stays within that $150,000 budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. One last time, anyone like to address the committee? If so, just come forward. Your name for the record, please. Go ahead, come on up.
My name is Sandy Kuciawa. I am a taxpayer. I am a member of the Leominster Education Association. I am a teacher of over 40 years. I love this district, I love the city. What I am looking at as a teacher is a CTEI teacher who has looked at students who have worked very hard to accommodate the city, to do what they have to do in order to make things very better for everybody else. In addition to that, I have other students who are senior teachers who are looking at their, to go on to college, to, to college, to, I'm sorry, to go on to colleges, and I have looked at the overall, what we have to offer our students, and it's wonderful, everything. LCE is wonderful, the CTEI program is wonderful, everything is good. It's all to fit the needs of the students in this community. And what I'm concerned about is the fact that if we go on and we make these cuts, it's not going to be acceptable to our students in terms of moving on, in terms of their careers, in terms of technological, in terms of whatever. So all I'm asking you to do is to look on and to see that we are doing the best that we can, and all of you are working very hard, and I understand that, and it's very difficult. I've been a teacher for 40 years, I do understand. I am one of those members of this community when they marched the casket down the streets of Leominster and said, "Education is dead." Let's just hope that as we move forward with our initiatives in this district, dean, gym, members of the school committee, that education is not dead in this community and that we can move onward and upward, and let's just hope that we can make everything good for every student, whether it be the AP student, whether it be the CTEI student, whether it be the average student, whether it be the special ed student. We are not asking for you to cut and to look and to look at every person in this district and say, "No, this is not good." No, everything is good. We're all good. We're all good. It's just to look at it in a total perspective and say, "It's time that we look at all the students in this community and say, it's, it's all positive. LCE is positive, Leominster High is positive, and all the other community educational resources that we have, and all of you are looking to help us, so please, help."
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Would anyone else like to address the school committee? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, you guys can't go again?
Oh, no, you had your chance.
It's funny. So when I went first, I was wanting to talk about how, I'm sorry, my name's Peter D. Francesco. I grew up in Leominster, I live in Worcester now. Up until a couple of days ago, I was an employee here. Most of my comments, Mr. Mayor, were about how the relationship between the mayor and the school system is broken, and how there's really three main things that any relationship that's going to be successful needs. You need to be able to compromise, you need to trust each other, you need to be accountable to each other. And right now, in this district, there's very little of that, if any. You know, the spending, it's very well documented how little the city gives the school district. I mean, you just go on the website, the DESI website, and you can see it, compared to how much we are charged back for certain things. A lot of it, we may not know what it is, and if people do know, they're not sharing that, so how can we trust what we're paying for, you know, is going to what really needs to be paid for? And accountability, like I said, and I'll say it again, everybody up here has made huge mistakes when it comes to the school district, and in a strong relationship, that's okay because you're there for each other to help each other out and back each other up. But right now, there is none of that. There is no helping each other out. It's finger pointing, it's blaming, and it's, excuse me, raising your hands up like, "Oh, it's not my fault, it's everybody else's." No matter what anybody says, nothing is going to get fixed until the relationship gets fixed. So I implore all of you to work on relationship building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committee? If so, come forward. One last time, anyone? If not, close this portion of the meeting, thank you all who came to speak, and we'll now move on to communications.
There are no communications to the chair.
We'll move on to superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report is primarily, the last day of school is Friday, June 23rd, half-day for students, full day for staff, so we have three and a half days left, so let's all hang in there, get through those three and a half days. I just want to take the opportunity to thank all students and staff for their hard work all during the school year, and we ask that everyone have a safe summer so that we can come back and get started in the fall. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Can we go to presentations, committee discussion, FY '18 budget, please?
Yeah, I put the FY '18 budget on the agenda. We have no presentations, but I just wanted to keep the, the agenda flowing through if there are any comments from the committee, but other than that, we can move on to the other presentations.
Let me just, while everybody's here, and for those that might not have been there, the last meeting that we had to sort of discuss, sort of the process, process is, is not over yet, it's the very beginning. The state hasn't passed their budget yet, and that may be additional revenues. It now, I put my budget forward, it goes to the city council, but there is a very long way to go. There was a very long summer, it may seem very short, it may seem like it goes quick, but there, it's a very long summer in the sense of work, and we need to get a good understanding and close out the fiscal year '17 and go line by line, item by item, to see where those cost savings might be. We haven't discussed cost savings to any extent, and I think it was July 7th will be our next meeting after the budget is passed. We'll start July 7th. I know not all members can make it, but I would probably, more than likely, do two meetings a week for at least a couple of hours a week. The public is invited to come. I'm sorry, July...
July 7th is the Friday, which usually is not a regular...
What was the date that we were talking about?
I think it was July 10th.
10th, I'm sorry.
Just to...
But we'll probably start, it'll be difficult to get anybody together probably that week of July 4th, so we'll start on the 10th. And through the summer, we'll continue to meet, and the public is invited to attend and go line by line, school by school, with each principal. No one knows the school system better than the principals, and go through the principals' priorities in terms of their budget. I've said this right along, if I had my, if I had my will, each school be given a budget, they'd be free to hire who they want to hire, fire who they want to hire, do things the way they want, total autonomy, and, but be accountable for, for, for the results. But that's not the way it is. So we will start on July 10th and go through systematically each budget, each school, to see if there are not savings in there, and I'm sure everybody in the household knows, you just keep going through it, and you keep finding things, and you, each time you go through the budget, you prioritize things, and you find more and more things... find more and more things, and the more you find, you know, $10 adds up to 100, 100 adds to 1,000, 1,000 adds to tens of thousands, and then you've got, you know, some significant savings. So that's the way we'll handle it. So this is a very, very preliminary part of the budget process. It isn't any different than we've done it in the past years, but it is, but we do have to submit by law to at least council, the council has to submit and approve a budget, or we go to a 1/12 budget. And that is the reason why you see the numbers that you do. If we go to 1/12 budget, that means no department can spend more than 1/12 of its total budget per month. So 1/12, obviously meaning that. So that's where we are in the budget process, and so more to come. It will evolve itself, and again, I suspect you'll see some cost savings through the process, but I suggest it probably isn't, the budget isn't going to look probably anything like it does as it stands. Okay? So work in progress. We'll now move on to innovative plan renewal CTEI. Yes?
Can I ask other people to make a comment?
Yes.
Can I just make a... First of all, I think it's, I think the unfortunate thing by us now having to wait and see what happens and have these meetings in July and stuff like that, we are losing, we are going to be losing good teachers, good staff, custodians, special ed, terror professionals. We're going to be losing those to other districts because they need to have their jobs, and they're going to be looking for other jobs. And, you know, I just, we worked hard to put forth a budget that we thought was realistic. We had to make cuts with that, which none of us were happy to make those cuts. But we came forth with a budget that was 4%. I thought it was fair. I didn't, I still don't like the outsourcing, people know that. I, thank you, God. I just, I just feel that we could have done better. We should have done better. That budget should have been put forward. I just...
Okay. Well, since you said he, and I'll take all the responsibility if it makes people feel better, that's fine, but I have a responsibility to balance the budget, and if there's X amount of dollars, and there's only so many dollars, then my job is to somehow or another balance the budget with the amount of revenue that we have or that we anticipate coming into the city. So there is no such thing as anticipating revenues, but then saying, "I know that this is all the money we have, but I'm going to put forth a budget that's not balanced and submit it to the council." No mayor in the city of Leominster, as far back as we've gone, has submitted a budget that wasn't balanced based on projected revenues. So if that's what, if that's what people want, if you can disagree with me, we can disagree totally, but my responsibility is to send in a balanced budget, and that's what I did. And I'm comfortable with that. I know you may not be happy with it, but that is one of my responsibilities. So for me to turn in a budget, that is not realistic, and that is not realistic based on projected revenues, wouldn't be fair to the, all of the citizens of Leominster, nor the students or anybody else that's here. So if you want to be upset with me, I will take that 100%, that's fine with me. Okay? Okay? Yes.
Okay. So Nona already very well stated the impact on losing some of our amazing teachers. So I just want to say it's not, it's also families. I've heard a lot of families who are now looking to school choice out. We have finally flipped those numbers, where we were bringing in more school choice kids, more people were seeking out an opportunity to come to Leominster schools. Now, we're going to lose those families, and we're going to lose our Leominster families who are going to look elsewhere for educational opportunities for their children, and that is also very unfortunate. And I'd like to remind everybody that, as Eileen stated at the very, very beginning, the work here is not done. Come to the city council meetings and tell your city councilors how you feel about this, because they are, a few of them are here tonight, and they are listening.
All right, all right, all right. Barry, you want to come forward? Come down here. Come sit here if you want. I don't know, I don't want, I mean, we're going to just keep yelling at each other here, this makes no sense.
But in the meantime...
I don't know.
We're going to lose teachers and families, and I wanted to make sure that that was unfortunate.
Hello? Yeah, my name is Barry Hudson, the band director at Leominster High School. I've been the union president for two years, and for the last four years, I've been just a teacher. And I've seen our budgets been level funded. I've seen our students go elsewhere. I've seen programs be going downhill for the last four years, and I'm kind of sick of it. I'm kind, I'm ready for us to be Leominster again, something we can be proud of. And I don't feel like we're proud of what we are right now. I don't think we're proud of the mayor. I don't think we're proud of the superintendent. I don't think we're proud of the school committee. I think we are, the students, the teachers of Leominster are way above what you guys are doing right now. I think you guys need to step up and figure it out. And what that means is maybe the mayor giving a little bit more, maybe the superintendent spending a little bit better, and maybe the school committee helping out the superintendent to figure out what he's doing. That's my honest opinion. I think the people behind me would agree with me. And I don't mean to be rude, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but all I've heard over the last four or five years is that we're trying to figure it out, we're trying to get it done, and it's not getting done. So someone has to move. You saw the students of Leominster High School Friday make a statement, and I was so proud of them for being respectful and doing what they're supposed to do. And I don't know what else it takes for you people to figure it out that this, our city deserves a great school system. We had one years ago. We're not that great right now. Our school, our MCAT scores are going down, all kinds of things are going down. Our sports are going down, everything's going down. Let's bring it back up again. And I don't think that you guys realize that. And I don't know if it's just the money part of it, I'm not sure what it is, but let's figure it out. Let's work together as a team, as we tell our students to do that. Our teachers are working hard to get our students to be where they should be. Our kids are working hard with the resources they have to get where they should be. I don't believe you people are working hard enough together to get where we need to be. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, that's just my honest opinion. Thank you.
Barry, can you, one second? Just one second. So, so, one of the things is there's this particular document that's been going around saying the city doesn't, you know, we only spend 97% or whatever. Hold on, let me, let me, so, this is the document that's been going around. So I went to, I think the gentleman, what was his last name? DeFrancesco said, "All you have to do is go to the DESI website." So if, and I'm going to, you can take this with you and circulate it and look up your own information. The year is not over yet, okay? And you can just look at this information. This is, this is in very, this is, this is very much in contrast from the information that has been circulated. And I'm not saying anybody's wrong for it. People get information, and they assume it's probably...
I haven't seen that, so what does that information tell me?
What I'm going to do is ask, this is going to be submitted to the clerk, and...
One more time, what does it tell me? So I can know right now.
It says that we were, always were in line to be above our net school spending number, okay? And that we're not the lowest, you know, that we're not, that the information that you see here...
And I don't, I mean to be clear, I'm not blaming it all on you, I'm blaming it on the system here that doesn't work.
I'll take my piece.
Listen, we have something that's not working right now, whether it's you, or him, or us, it's not working, and our students are suffering because of that. So how do we make it work?
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Well, first is to make sure we're all on the same page. So what, let me finish my thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm going to give this to the clerk and enter it to the record, this information. And then we have some time to qualify this, to look and find out what the right information is. We should all have the, hold on, we should all have the right information.
Yeah.
Because time and time and time again, I keep hearing the same message, which is based on this document that I don't even know where it came from.
Yeah.
And it says it came from DESI, but when I go to DESI...
I haven't seen any of those, so I don't know what you're talking about, really.
So when I go to DESI, it tells me a different story. So I'm going to submit this for everyone's clarification. This, hold on, so this is going to be submitted as a matter of record, two different documents. It basically says that the city has always been in line to spend over the required amount, and the school, hold on, hold on, hold on, and the school year isn't over yet. It isn't even over yet. So one of these documents is incorrect. So I'm going to ask the superintendent to contact DESI, who's the, the rule, you know, sort of the people that give us the right information, qualify this information to tell us which, is it this one that's been, everyone's using, and if it's, and if you're right, fine, as long as we're on the same page, or is it DESI's information right here? Which is it?
Well, that's the other thing, is that I, I wish that...
I didn't say it was the minimum. The year isn't over yet.
Yeah.
I didn't put, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I didn't put this document out. I'm merely trying to find out the facts. That's it.
Well, here's the issue, is that your facts are different than their facts, and that there's no clarity at all, and nobody knows what, you said it in the paper, I don't know what number he's given out. We don't know because there's no clarity to that. Now, how you get clarity is you have, you have a, an audit done. Let's have an audit done to find out where everything's going.
We have one done every year.
Because other than that, it's just the shell game. So until we get some clarity about who is right, because people, some people don't believe you, some people don't believe him, some people don't believe us. So let's find out what exactly it is, and let's figure it out for the kids.
That's why I'm asking DESI, that's why I'm submitting this document, to ask DESI who is right. That's all.
Well, let's do, let's get an audit. Let's get something done, because this is just wasting time and putting...
Barry, we get audited every year.
I don't know that we do.
Yes.
Well, I don't know that everyone is agreement with those numbers, because your numbers don't agree with his, and his don't agree with yours. So obviously, the audit is not right.
Barry, 2014, 2014, there was six...
I really don't want to get into it, because I don't know anything about 2014.
6.2 million dollars.
All I'm saying is that we need an audit right now to clarify what's going on. That's all I'm saying. And then people will be happy, and then people can say, "Yep, the mayor is right," or "The superintendent is right." Let's do something that gets the kids going on the right path. That's all I'm saying.
I'll say this, I don't know how many, I don't argue with you. What I'm saying is, one of the, this is DESI's document. This is the document that's been circulated around town. One of these documents is wrong, and all I'm looking for is basically them to do a preliminary audit, ask them to do a preliminary audit, and tell us which number's right, so we can circulate it amongst everybody.
Okay. Well, that'd be great. And all I'm saying is that in the meantime, we're losing great students and great teachers to other communities. That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you.
Yes.
I just was out taking an emergency call, so I'm not sure, are we all getting to make a comment if we want to?
If anybody wants to, we're talking about the budget.
Perfect. So just a couple of things.
Yeah, I don't think it's any...
Oh...
Nobody's mic's on, I don't think.
Yeah, they're on. Hello? Okay, sorry. Sorry. Just two things that I want to make, a comment about that have just been said, that I understand that the year isn't over yet, but for 150 teachers, the year is over. I'm sorry. And then with the documents that you're going to qualify, I think you said, is that the word? I would like to be, to ask that the school committee get to see all of that documentation first before you decide to put it out, because I feel like there's been a lot of information out there that you've been saying as the chair of the school committee that I don't agree with, and that I don't feel like is representative of what everybody on the school committee agrees with. So if you could just please...
I took the document that's being circulated, this is the only two things, just so you understand.
Listen, you don't have to tell me, trust me, I've spent hours on the DESI website. I know exactly.
I took the document that's being circulated, saying that we're the lowest, we fund the schools at the lowest, and then I took DESI's information. And so I'm giving it to the clerk to have the superintendent make a phone call to DESI and ask them which information is right. Is the information that's been circulated saying we invest the least amount correct, or is their own information incorrect? Some, we have to, we have to arrive at that.
Well, I know, but I just, you know what, I think that it's, it's, it can be, numbers can sometimes be twisted however you want it to appear. So all I'm asking is that us, as a school committee, get to see all of those numbers before you start posting them on Facebook or wherever.
I just made them a public document.
I would like to see it.
I just made them a public document.
I'm just asking. But you...
The reason I made it a public document is so anybody can see those two documents now.
Okay. Thank you.
What if you just talk to each other, and the students don't have to suffer?
Right.
Like, just turn to each other and have a conversation about what's going on.
All right.
Not on Facebook. Yeah, and not on Facebook.
Again, I think that document is very critical to find out if that document is accurate or not, because people keep referring to it.
Have a discussion, and every student in the system is suffering.
Okay. Anybody else wants to make a comment on the budget? All right. If not, go ahead, Cody.
I think the public's made themselves very clear at this point. We're all accountable, and I absolutely agree with that. I've been here a year and a half, and I can tell you that there's been a lack of accountability on all levels of government, including state, local, this committee, and the administration. I asked that, you know, we put on today's agenda a discussion of accountability so that we could try and talk to the public and break down, year by year, how we got to this point. Unfortunately, that never made it to this, you know, particular, particular agenda, and I certainly hope that it does in the near future. But I'd like to say, we're trying to work together, and I want to echo Nona, who said, you know, "We didn't like the budget that we had to put forward, but we put it forward as what we consider to be, you know, what we thought the schools could survive with compared to, you know, getting nothing at all." I'm not happy with this budget, I know a lot of people aren't. But ultimately, coming back to my main point, how are we supposed to work together when we're attacking each other through social media and other platforms, through the paper, when we can't even agree on the facts? And I just want to know, Mr. Mayor, you know, before you go to the paper and say things like, you know, "I don't know the numbers that these guys are turning in, they've had three years to work out a budget," and you're entitled to speak your own opinion, but why don't you reach out to us first before, you know, attacking us publicly? It's vital, and this breaks so many protocols within our ethics, you know, within our own school committee ethics protocols. Why don't you reach out to us first with these numbers? Why don't you engage with us more?
Cody, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, oh, I'm not speaking out against anybody. I merely, everything that I've put out are documents that are certified by auditors, certified by the city comptroller, or certified by DESI. I haven't put out any, these are not my documents, Cody.
I believe you. I believe you, but if you had disparities with the school department and the school committee on those numbers, why didn't you come to us first?
Cody, I tried to put, if you remember back, I tried to put an oversight committee together because, if you remember this, because the school department had 6.3 million dollars in errors in the, in the audit in '14. 6.3 million dollars of overages and underages. To me, unacceptable.
I agree.
So people got upset with me because I wanted to put an oversight committee together who would assist us going through the process of understanding this. So I don't want to argue with anybody. I think everybody has a job. You're turning your budget, now I have a job, I have a responsibility to turn a balanced budget. Do I hope, does anybody, I mean, if people really think that after I've spent 24 years of my life and taken us out of the worst financial condition we were probably in, and no fault to anybody's, that somehow or another, I'm anti schools and I don't like kids, I've spent, all you have to do, Barry, Barry, all you have to do is look back at my record, Barry, Barry, all you have to do is look back at my record, and I'll stand by my record. In the meantime, I, I, I don't speak out against anybody. I'm not speaking out against anybody.
We still have other people who need to speak, just so you know.
All right. Yes, I'm sorry. But what I'm saying is, I have a responsibility too. My responsibility is to present a balanced budget. And, and, and I think I did the right thing to give it to the city council um, in a balanced form. Now, those numbers might change. They're subject to change. And when they change, last year, for instance, they did change. And they changed later on in the season that, in, in, after the budget was passed, and that meant an additional 500 or 550,000 dollars back to the system. So, but I can't tell you what that number's going to be.
Right. And I'll, I'll keep this quick, I promise. All I'm going to say is, the only way we can build trust is if you reach out to us first. That's all I'm going to say.
Ron, then Wendy. Ron?
Yeah, I'm listening. I, I was just writing on a few little tidbits. I, uh, I am conflicted because I agree with what Cody has been saying and what Nona has been saying. Uh, obviously, there's something that's not being transmitted appropriately. Yes, I heard about, I saw, I heard about demonstration Friday and I heard a lot of people tell me that the demonstration was empty because the kids don't vote, the kids don't work, some of them do work, uh, the kids this, the kids that. I think what needs to be done, the kids have to bring their parents to the thing tomorrow night and the other thing that's going to be happening next Monday. Because at the risk of being called a revolutionist, I believe the time is at hand to start shaking things up. And people out there, I want you, I want you to listen to your kids. Go with your kids to City Hall because everyone is saying the kids don't pay taxes, the kids don't work, and this and that. Well, you know what? The parents do. And the parents have to be vocal. We can only do so much. I disagree with Dean. We disagree with, amongst many things. But we gotta get things done. I'm a Lamonster resident. I was born in this city. But we have to have things changed. We are, we have a sense of urgency on our end. And if we don't do something now, Nona was saying and, and Wendy was saying, the parents are going to take the kids out of Lamonster. And if that's going to happen. And I, in 1982, we had a bloodletting around here. We had a lot of teachers got laid off. I know because there was a bunch of rooms with teachers that got laid off. And it wasn't pretty. And I'm here to tell you, I don't want it to happen again. It's an embarrassment for me. No matter how I say it, I can't seem to make my, I can't seem to get it understood. It is unacceptable. Yes, we're talking about things that, the different pieces of paper that said this and that. There's something there that doesn't jive. And you know, I'm not preaching, I don't want to preach, I don't want to preach to the court.
Address your comments to the school committee.
I'm keeping because they're also talking. And I don't want them to interrupt us because, yes, you're all geared up and that's fine. But you also have to listen and you have to listen to yourselves. You have to demand change. And change is painful sometimes. But I'm asking you, I'm asking everyone, the kids have to bring the parents because the parents have grandchildren. I, I'm asking. I don't want to have any more empty demonstrations. That's what I'm asking for. And if I'm accused, if I'm accused of causing a riot-
Alright, hold up, hold up, hold up.
Alright, I'll start.
We're not, this is, we're not getting into-
It's not a give and take here.
I know it's not a give and take, but I, I just want-
Put your forth, point forth and now it's Wendy Stern.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you to, to bear with me while I finish my statement from before and I appreciate what you had to say. And I was listening to, Barry, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to say, it's, it's fine. Um, I've been sitting in this seat for 15 months now and I am really troubled by the communication on this committee. I am not an irresponsible person. I do not think any of us are. I do not think the budget that we voted on and passed was irresponsible and that was how we and that budget were represented in the newspaper. And that is quite upsetting. I don't sit here spending the hours, putting in the work and the compromise to be called irresponsible. What's irresponsible is to not fund our schools adequately, not passing, uh, but passing a budget that we feel would help the schools survive and do the least damage possible. That is not irresponsible. That's the first thing. The other thing is the protest on Friday. I was there. I walked from the high school, um, I went from the high school to City Hall with the students. They were extremely well behaved. They had questions. They had really good questions. Um, and I take exception to them being told that you're the only one out there answering questions. You are not. The, you're the only one with the platform you have, which is your Facebook and your TV show and the radio access. But the rest of us have said over and over, including the older, um, the, the ones who have been here longer, I've heard them say over and over that they are available via email or phone anytime to answer any questions. I stood there in your line of sight and you said to these kids that you are the only one willing to answer questions. I was standing right there. I was answering questions. I stayed for two hours after talking to some amazing students. I've spoken to any parent or teacher or anybody who has reached out to me day or night. I've sat here for hours after meetings, talking to anybody who wanted to talk to me. So, I really ask that you respect the rest of us and not use your platform to beat us because we are not irresponsible. We are hardworking people who care about the students and teachers of Lamonster. That's all I have.
Thank you. We will now move on. Wait, hold on. There's one other, again, and I'm submitting these because we will be audited and I'm submitting these so they will be part of the, um, record. This is the transportation cost. This is another bone of contention and a disagreement in numbers and, and this is certainly something that I would like to know. So, the first page is the transportation cost from fiscal year 2011 all the way up until current. The second page is what was submitted by the superintendent for transportation, which was 3.2 million for this past year. And then what was funded by the city council, which was passed. So, um, this is, this is the, this is what was passed, this was what was submitted by the superintendent, given to me, which I gave to the city council, which was funded.
Committee didn't pass a budget.
Okay.
Your comptroller made up that number.
This is the nu, no.
The 3.2 million came from your comptroller, not from this committee.
Okay.
I'm sorry I'm speaking out of turn, but tired of this line.
Alright. So, so, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You did.
Okay. So, the purpose of this is that if we're incorrect, to demonstrate, to show the number that was submitted, that seems to be the difference. So, in other words, what's happening is somebody's saying there's another number. We can't find that number. So, what I'm submitting is what I have available, which is, which is what the city council passed based on what we were given by the superintendent, which I submitted. So, some, go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me, everyone. I know people are getting very, um, passionate. It's important that you let us do our business.
Yeah, I don't understand this.
It's not really a protocol, excuse me, excuse me, please, please let us conduct our meeting. And we appreciate that everybody has, um, very, uh, strong feelings. We have strong feelings as well. It's important that we give us an opportunity to go through our, our meeting.
So, what I'm saying is, a number was turned in and we funded it. And then later, we're told we didn't fund it correctly, that we underfunded the budget. So, if there's another document, all I'm looking for is, where is that document? So, I'll submit this.
But we did give a very accurate, um, budget this year with, um-
That's correct.
And we took, uh, great pains to decrease our transportation budget. Um, and we're still going to, um, be short in the amount of money that we were given. Um, Heather?
So, I have a-
And then Nona.
So, my question, I guess, is, in the budget that we presented this year with the amount of transportation, because we did ask for the full amount of transportation of the contract that you signed, um, is the city going to fund our full transportation obligation?
What we're going to do, I think, um, Kristin sent out a memo saying we're going to, we're going to talk. We, we hired a consultant that is going to make some recommendations. Based on those recommendations, then we'll just, the city hi, uh, the school department hired a consultant.
With a grant. We're not paying for it. It's with a grant.
And they're going to look at, um, possible ways to, um, to make our bus system more efficient. And, um, based on those recommendations, then, then, uh, another number will be submitted and based on that-
Well, we already deducted some of the amount of savings that they have already indicated. So, we already took care of that when we submitted our budget to you.
And what happened, what will happen is we'll review that number once we see it because I think there's some other cost savings in there. And, um, and, and, and so we don't know what that number is. So, it's, it's hard to fund the number. We don't know what it is.
So, each year you, you consistently give us about 3.2 million if you look back year to year, in the past couple of, no, I know. But I saw your presentation that you put together. But I've, because I sat on the transportation committee, I looked at all of those numbers and it's pretty consistent that it's 3.2 million each year. So, this year was about 4.8.
Right.
Um, and that was with a lot of deductions. Um, so, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we did ask for full funding of transportation, which is a municipal responsibility.
And, and, and we are talking about this year's budget as opposed to previous, right, as opposed to-
But the amount put forward was less than, yes.
Excuse me. Um, so, um, we're talking about this year's budget as opposed to previous years.
Right.
And the transportation issue is something that we've worked very diligently on to bring down the costs. It does mean different types of bus stops, more community bus stops. It does mean, you know, some cutting of, um, I think two buses. Um, so, we are working very hard and we're going to need the community's support around that. Um, but still, um, I think included in the budget that you sent down to the city council was not the full amount that we requested.
Right. Because we don't have a fine, we don't know what that number is yet. As soon as, and, and I think what Kristin's going to be doing on July 10th, right, Suzanne, I think what the communication said is we're going to narrow, we're going to narrow down on what that number is.
Right. I think once we-
We won't go to fund it until such time as we know what that number is.
We need to close out our books for 2007, 18, whatever, this, 17, this year. Um, and then go line by line for 2018. So, Nona was next?
I just, I'm not going to talk about transportation. I'm just going to talk about some, um, kind of erroneous figures that have, have been out there. Um, you know, you've, you've talked about how, um, our population has decreased, but I think you're looking at the October 1 figures. And if you look at, if you look at the end of year figures, I think you can, you'll see that in some ways we've increased, like this, um, foundation budget that was passed out tonight. We have a total of 6,222 students and that's an increase from October 1 that we reported 6,047 students. That's an increase of 175 students over the, oh, throughout the district. It's not just at one school. Um, also, um-
Nona, just with that, do you want to explain that next October 1st, those will reflect those numbers?
Right.
Well, whatever's in our system as of October 1st.
Not necessarily. As of October 1, the hot bodies in the school seats are, are what's counted. Um, but lots of times, what I noticed as, as secretary working at the high school is shortly after October 1, we had an influx of, influx of students uh, because people are moving around or people are now getting approved for school choice. Um, so, I, I think, you know, I think you need to look at end of year figures also. Um, also, I was really kind of disheartened to see mentioning of, that only a certain amount of school committee members pay taxes. We, we all pay taxes. We all pay taxes in a way that either is through rent. Your rent gets increased because the taxes have increased on that building. So, they, they charge it back to those who are paying taxes. Also, um, if, if someone is living at home, I'm sure they are paying, paying room and board, uh, so to speak. And that goes towards paying, uh, helping their parents pay their taxes. Um, Greenfield, you mentioned Greenfield in a posting, um, that they were having to make cuts. Yes, they are having to make cuts, but they increased their budget by 6%. We were only asking for 4%. Um, we are looking at, you know, transportation, how to, how to reduce costs in that. Um, healthcare, I mean, we have no control over healthcare costs. That's the cities and that's with those, that's one of the chargebacks. Um, you know, you mentioned how much we spend on renovations, how much the city has spent on renovations. Um, but we've gotten over 70% back from the state in, in funding those re, those renovations. And-
I don't know what it is.
You know, I just, I, I think, you know, I think we need to do a better job of getting the correct information out there. I think we need to work together. Um, Mayor, you've been on this, you've been on this committee for 20 some odd years. I've only been on it for four years. I'm, you know, I would look to you as someone who should be guiding all of us in, in showing us how to be better at finance, how to, how to do that. And I don't see the help there. We should be working all together. I'm willing to work all together. I'm willing to say, hey, mistakes were made in the past. We can go back years and years and years and years and, and see mistakes made. But we need to say, okay, we did it. Now we need to improve ourselves. Just like you say to a child, you know, you're, you did this wrong. Let's, let's fix it. Let's move on. Let's build and become a better place. Lamonster is a great city. The school system is a great system.
Sue?
Well, look, hold on. First of all, I, I didn't say anything about anybody paying taxes.
Oh, yes, you did.
It was in the paper. You won't, you won't even allow me the, you won't even allow me the chance. We can't afford to.
Alright, excuse me, excuse me.
Unbelievable. Alright, I'm speaking. Hang on, okay? Then you can say whatever you want. Pull it up. When people were asking me questions individually, I said, email me questions and then I will put the question up and the answer so everybody can see it. Everybody can see it. If you wanted me to go back and find the thread, I will. But what I said is, individually, everyone kept asking me different questions and I said, I'm never going to be able to answer everybody's question. However, you email them to me. I'll put the question up so everybody can see the question, then I'll put the answer. Somebody asked me how many school committee members pay taxes and I told them.
The answers are all relevant.
And then somebody else, and then somebody asked real estate taxes is what they asked.
So, you went out of your way and looked at-
So, I put it up. Then somebody asked me how much I made and I said, this is how much I made. My pay increases are tied to the consumer price index. So, I didn't generate that. I was responding to somebody that asked me a question and I put it up. That's simple as that. I didn't generate these questions.
Sue, you could have gone on, you could have gone on and said, they all do. They all pay taxes in, in their own way, whether it's through their rent or through paying their parents a, a fee to live at their house, you know.
I think it came across condescending, but, but at this point-
Somebody asked me a question, I answered it. I answered everybody, as many questions as I possibly could.
So, Sue, you're next?
Okay, so, I've sat here and listened to everyone and do I feel terrible about cuts? Absolutely. Do I feel terrible that we don't have a balanced budget? Well, the only way we could balance our budget is on the hides of employees in the system. I feel terrible. But I'm going to throw this out to you. What budget would forget to bud, what system would forget to budget a half a million dollars in athletic stipends? What system would forget to budget a half a million dollars in teacher stipends? So, some of the deficit situation we're in is reckless spending because we are covering this year's expenses into next year's budget. Shame on us. I can't believe that. And I'm sorry. And really, I've been approached by so many people in this community, what's going on? I said, do you want the real story? Because I don't care if it's the mayor or the superintendent. First of all, some members of the school committee think they report to the superintendent. So, that's a problem, I see. I don't think that we're an independent group anymore. I think we're meshed in with the administration and we shouldn't be. And we're bickering back and forth, whatever. But here's my issue, okay? We have asked for a line item budget the past three years. We have not gotten a line item budget. So, how can you make decisions on anything? And on tonight's agenda, we're talking about extending LCE with the state. And by the way, we signed a contract for a building of five years, but we didn't know that the contract with the state expires this year. Shame on, uh, communication is poor and it needs to be addressed, but I'm just, you know.
Sue, we need to, okay. People need to address their comments to the committee.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. And, and let me just, let me just say, just to your point about enrollment numbers. And again, this is something we're going to have to get. According to Desi's, uh, Desi's information that we, we obtained, it says that from 2008, and again, we have to validate this so we're on the same page. This is another-
But I question-
Hold on. Went from in 2008 to 2018. And this is why we may have, we seen this sort of spiral in, in terms of assistance from the state. According to their numbers, not ours, because ours are different than theirs, we have to validate this because this is money. If we don't have the right numbers, we're losing money. From 2008 to 2018, we've lost 329 students. That's according to them.
But I'd like to say, that's October 1 figures. And I guarantee you, those are October 1 figures. And I think you also need to look at end of year figures. That's why, that's why I have always asked, and people know from the time I was on this committee, I have always asked for the reports to come back to us, the end of year report and the October 1 report. So, we can look and compare the two of them.
Alright.
Nona, you're a year off and the foundation is a year off.
Right.
You're getting paid in the pool for last year, not for this year. So, you have to remember that. And the other thing is, foundation money comes in and kids can go wherever they want. So, your school choice, whatever. It's what our actual enrollment is in the district at that time.
That's when it equates to money. But I'm talking about when you say, if you look at a figure and you say, oh, we've dropped figures from this year to this year, you need to look at those figures for that school year from beginning to- year from beginning to end.
Well, of course. In terms of the information I just shared with you, we're off 329 students. That is part of the reason that probably we're not getting that state funding is because it's tied to enrollment. If we're 329 students off, that's substantial. If you average it out at $10,000 per student, that's substantial.
So, Dave, from the contract until 2018, and now the school committee is trying to lock for him to break that contract, I just want to make that public.
Okay. And, and these are the things that we're going to have to speak to. But I guarantee you, the process is long, is, is far from over. There's a long way to go before we reach our final numbers. And I haven't stopped yet. I've, if you come in and look at my desk, you'll see, I haven't done anything in the last three weeks except for budget stuff, trying to find other places. I know, nobody wants to hear it. Okay, all right.
So I think we need to move on to the.
We'll move now on to the next item. In the budget is item number 2B, which is innovative plan renewal. CTEI.
All right, so the process here is that we had, the school committee had approved five-year innovation school plans when we originally converted the Center for Technical Education to Center for Technical Education Innovation. We do an annual review of the innovation school and submit that to the Department of Ed. The five-year prospectus that we had submitted expires at the end of June, and all we have to do is have the school committee decide one way or the other as to whether they want to continue the innovation school status. So David's here to update us on the school and moving forward.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here tonight. I was excited at one time, and during the time from the beginning of this meeting to now, I'm not so excited anymore. I try to work hard at having a lot of wind in my sails, so to speak. And I, when I watch the way people interact with one another like they're interacting tonight, I just want to take my papers and go home. But I wrote something out to the school committee tonight in regards to the innovation school, and I would like to read it to you. First of all, you all received this, and you read it, I hope?
Yep.
So, one of the things that keeps bothering me, among the many things, is I keep hearing that the budget is not over yet. Well, you need to walk in our shoes in the schools every day, and you need to see the things that we do, and you need to hear the things that students tell us, and the difficulties that they're having, and you need to hear how many times they say thank you, just for extending some kindness to them. You have to hear that, but you don't. And when you say that the budget is not done yet, and we're going to meet July 10th, and we're going to meet July 15th, and however many other dates, I think about all the teachers that got their slips. I think about all the time that went into working with these teachers and helping them to develop the skills to be able to reach their students the way they do in a magnificent way. I think about all they gave to do what they do, and then to have the rug pulled out from under them, it's like a knife in my heart. And it bothers me very much. And so we asked tonight, can we do an innovation school again for another five years? My God, how can we do an innovation school? We can't even have a staff. You know, Mr. Beishan pointed out earlier this evening that if the cuts go through the way they are, we have five sharps that end up with one teacher in them. You can't run a sharp like that. And if it takes from now till July 10th or July 15th to figure out the budget, all those teachers are going to find other jobs, and they deserve it, I don't blame them. Then where does that put us? How do we open the school year with class sizes that are through the roof? I mean, this is huge. But I'm going to read this to you. This is, this is a letter to the members of the school committee, and it is an attempt to summarize what has been done in the last five years. And I'm going to end it with a little bit of a recommendation about maybe some way that we can resolve the budget crisis that we're in. Dear members of the school committee, I stand or I sit before you tonight as a representative of our school, the Lumenster Center for Technical Education Innovation. When we voted as a faculty to become an innovation school five years ago, you unanimously approved for us to do so. Following that approval, we received $150,000 from our city to be used for capital expenses to help equip our school with the necessary technology to train our students with 21st century skills. We use that money to get new computers for our two computer automated drafting labs, our two honors electronics labs, and to create another computer lab that would provide another classroom to train students in project lead the way courses offered to all the students at LHS CTEI that signed up for those classes. We also received $25,000 from the Commonwealth to assist with implementing the initiatives we hoped to accomplish to fulfill the autonomies listed in our innovation plan. Since these initial investments, we have received no further financial assistance from outside sources in achieving the goals of our innovation plan. However, we have persisted in attaining our goals and hope to move forward in completing more initiatives. We struggled to meet some of these goals during the third and fourth years of our five-year term as an innovation school. Our operating budget at CTEI, which includes textbooks, instructional supplies, requested technology updates such as equipment and software, was underfunded by our local budget. Then last year, due to the findings of D C's coordinated program review of our chapter 74 programs, the district was mandated to put $100,000 back into the operating expenses if we wanted to continue with our certification. It took the CPR review for that to happen. That's sad. It is, it is not surprising that when this money was put back in our budget, we were able to carry out some of the major goals of the innovation plan, which included the building and opening of the new school store, which would not have taken place without the donation from Federal Digital Credit Union, because we, there was no money to do that. But they gave it to us. The creation of the eighth grade training program for students from our middle schools, the building of the photovoltaic solar panel learning station to promote the study of sustainable energy in the back of our school right now, and the establishment of a 501(c)(3) staff fund, a nonprofit established, a nonprofit fund established to perpetuate the goals and mission of CTEI and provide scholarships to deserving CTEI students with plans to continue in career fields for which they were trained as well as post-secondary education. As per the design of the innovation plan, we have established a board of directors consisting of five lead cluster teachers and the administrators of CTEI. This board helps to establish the governance and educational goals and priorities of CTEI. The stipends of our lead cluster teachers, which are equivalent to the stipends of the department heads at LHS, are paid for with Perkins funds, which we receive from the federal government through the Commonwealth. This board has worked very hard to develop other plans to provide our students with educational opportunities that are relevant for today's world, as reported by the North Central Workforce Development Board, with whom we try to work very closely with. We introduced plans to initiate the following programs at LHS CTEI. Business technology. We thought this would be a great program to coincide with or complement the building of the school store. Early childhood education. We spent the whole year planning that. We have a senior courtyard that could be used for a playground for daycare center that we could have in our school, and we have students that would just love to be part of an early childhood education program. And when they go through that program, they could get certified, so they could be daycare center providers when they graduate from high school. Not a bad deal for training students. And right now, again, the Workforce Development Board will tell you that these kinds of positions are plentiful in our society right now, in this area where we live. Then we have the TV and radio broadcasting program, which we tried to initiate during this past school year, and the Information Support Service and Networking Program. We have commitments from professional people established in their respective fields to serve on the program advisory committees of, of two of these programs, but there is never enough money to invest in these programs by hiring teachers. As a matter of fact, we have a vacant graphic communications teacher position that was never filled when one of our former graphics teachers retired. And our two graphic teachers that we have are working extremely hard, and I just wonder what we could do if we had that third teacher back in there? Because we've put so much pressure on them to produce different things that we're wearing them out, and they're the ones that are taking care of the new store that we built. So not only do they not have a third teacher, but they're doing more work than they did before with three teachers. During the last four school years, we have secured approximately $330,000 in equipment funding through the Mass Skills Capital Grant, as well as the Perkins 409 Equipment Grants. The board and staff members at our school have been the ones who identified our needs and then helped write the proposals for the grants. We have no grant writers at CTEI, so we innovatively write these competitive grants ourselves. In addition, we continue to serve the needs of our community in various ways, including the work of our construction cluster programs. This year alone, we continued to provide the office of emergency management with a renovation of more space for bathrooms and locker rooms. We also built offices for the District Court at Gallagher Building, as well as innumerable electrical projects, providing new power outlets, data ports, lights, and security entrances at schools throughout the district. We have saved the city in excess of approximately $170,000 in labor costs for these projects during the past school year alone. Now we are facing the possibility of reductions to our teaching staff because of this budget dilemma we find ourselves in. Should any of these reductions become a reality, there is no way, 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 we can continue to successfully carry out the mission of our innovation plan, as well as the provision of services to our city. Without financial support and adequate teaching personnel, our plan becomes just a list of ideas written on a piece of paper, and instead of moving forward in the positive direction, we simply fail to grow and eventually begin to decline. So I would ask you to please do everything in your power to prevent this from happening by ensuring that we have the teachers and the finances that we need at CTEI. And that holds true for our entire district. Right now, we're talking about CTEI because it's the innovation school, but you know what? You know, and I know, that our kids need this from the kindergarten right up through to the high school. This is not, you know, pitting one school against another school. As a matter of fact, the teacher, the students that we get at CTEI come from our sending schools. One of the nicest things is when we have tours of the eighth grade, of the, of the programs by the eighth graders, and some of the teachers come up from the middle schools and they say, oh my God, I never thought that so-and-so was going to be able to do something like this. And they see their students succeeding, and all of the work that they put into preparing those students come to fruition. Where's that going to go? So we believe, and you have to forgive me because I'm not, I'm not an accountant. I just see all these things, and I can't understand how it's happening. So we hear so many different things that your head spins after a while. So when we say shell game, that's what it ends up looking like. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that it is, but boy, it looks that way. Because we can't get straight answers, and it's, it's disheartening. So we believe this budget dilemma we are facing in our schools can be resolved. The question about whether it is more important to have a AAA bond rating for our community or to make an investment in the children and young adults of our community seems basic and simple to me. Our children and adults deserve better, and it is up to us, as the responsible adults we are, to provide them with the best educational opportunities available to prepare them for successful, productive lives and careers. Doing so is an expense, but it is also an investment. Let's take the correct action to support the young people of our community. Fund the budget, just fund it. And vote for us to continue to be an innovation school. Give us the financial and personnel support we need to carry out our mission, and if you do so, the staff and students at CTEI will not let you down. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So. So Dave.
So Dave, first of all, I, I don't think any of us are aware of the actual cuts. I know at the preliminary level, you were talking, thought two teachers, but now it sounds like there's more, which we don't know.
Okay.
Okay? Just so you understand. But I, I guess, my concern is, what impact is this going to have on the West Boylston partnership? And I, you know, I, I mean, you've already gotten, how many students? Four?
Four, yes.
Okay, so what impact? I mean, I know we, we anticipate revenue, so we said that, I mean, is it possible to hire back people from those students? I, I don't know. Can you just speak to that? Because.
The revenue from four students would give us forty, a little bit more than $40,000. I think, I think it was 10,000, seven thirty?
Right, 10,000 and a little over seven.
Yeah.
10,000, seven something for one student, so multiplied by four, a little bit over $40,000. So that, that doesn't go too far. And the other day, I had to hand out 15 non-rehire slips to our teachers at CTEI. Fifteen. So that's a lot. And out of those 15, as Mr. Beishan pointed out, some of them were in our sharp areas where we only have two instructors, and if one of the instructors is let go, we end up with trying to run a sharp with one instructor with four grade levels. Can't do it. It's impossible.
Dave, are those 15? You said 15.
Yeah.
But is that 15 that haven't met professional status yet? Or does that mean that's how many peo, I mean, I think this is the other pit of information that's getting out there, and, and I, and you should know this stuff, so I'm asking you.
Yeah.
So you've been told that 15 people are going to be laid off, and they don't have jobs for next year?
No.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Please.
Yeah.
Okay. 15 people received pink slips.
Okay. And that's because they, they haven't reached professional development status, correct?
They haven't reached professional development status, and they were told that they're not going to be rehired unless they're called back.
All right. But have they been told they're not going to be called back? Definitely not for sure that they're not going to be called back?
They have not, they have not been told, they have not been told that.
All right, let's, let's.
We have a, we have a state law that we have to notify teachers by June 15th if they're not going to be rehired, with the budget being up in the air. With the budget being up in the air, we could not take the chance of not notifying teachers by last Thursday in regard to the reduction in force. So in order to protect ourselves in dealing with whatever the budget situation was going to be, we had to notify teachers. That does not mean that all of those people are going to be reduced in force. This was made clear to the school leadership team before the letters were even distributed. And most of the teachers were aware of that because they had communication through their association. So.
So it's procedural? It's by law?
It's a procedural process.
By law.
But by law, but I also understand that when a new person, because we sent letters out to all non-professional status teachers, which are teachers who have not reached professional status, which is three years in the system, I understand that younger teachers, when they receive a letter like that, they respond differently. So some immediately started to get their resumes out and start to look for other employment.
I always make it very clear that I'm always speaking for me. I'm just saying that when, we have to keep in mind that some of us were not here for that or part of that and we're trying to do better now. And it's, it's wrong to blanket everybody saying shame on you. That's all I'm saying. And I didn't want to say it publicly because I wanted to give you more respect than you gave us.
Okay. So we're going to move on now. There are a couple of motions that need to be made, made from the floor. If we could have those motions.
I'd like to make a motion to, to do, to offer a salary contract, do the salary for Glenn Frato for 112,000.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Next recommendation?
I'll make a motion to, that the school committee, through the superintendent, put a salary freeze on all school leadership salaries for this year to be revisited for next year or later on in the year.
Okay, is the motion a second?
A second.
Second by an owner? All in favor? Those opposed? Okay.
And what was the third one?
1% decrease.
Oh, right. Then we want to make a motion to.
Ask.
Ask the, through the superintendent to ask all the, the unions if they would be willing to take a 1% cut in their raises.
Raise.
For the, for the rest of this year, right.
Second.
Okay, second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, despite it all, we agreed on a couple of things. And we're just asking. It's, we're just making the offer, asking, and we go from there.
And Jim, can you let us know what the results are of those letters?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom and Michael, for seeking it out with us.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right. Thank you.